I'll get Arabic.
Like all the ones that says package.
All right, we'll call the workshop or that's the commission, I have to do it with freight force and not for me to start.
This is the day that the Lord has made that us resort to be made. For him and the Father, we come thinking for this day. We're gonna thank for everyone that came out today. You know our minds, you know our leaders and gathers in the way you wanted to do. Thank you for everyone that come out here today. And let the words of my mind and the meditation of my heart be accepted in our sight. Oh, Lord, my strength and I would give, let everybody say amen.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, does anyone in the audience want to come speak to us for five minutes or less about anything? All right, seeing no movement, we're moving on to the appointments. And we do have a proclamation tonight that we want to present.
There's Miss Patty.
You gotta stand by me.
That's right, and I'm grateful, thank you, our life.
All right, so whereas Ambrose Kimbrough has been a faithful diligent member of the Tiff County Board of Elections and Registration for over twenty years, and whereas during those twenty plus years, Mr. Kimbrough served as Chairman of the Board numerous times, and whereas on Election Day, Mr. Kimbrough oversaw the Mott Litman and El Dorado Voting Precincts, and whereas being assigned to those two precincts did not deter Mr. Kimbrough from helping any other precinct as needed. Now, on Election Night could be found making sure that poll managers turn in memory cards so that results could be calculated as efficiently and quickly as possible. Therefore, I, Tony McRae, Chairman of Tiff County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize the over twenty years of faithful and diligent service of Ambrose Kimbrough and urge my fellow citizens to be aware of his service, dedication, professionalism, wit, and humor.
He did have that.
He did, he did, he did.
So we present this to Miss Patty on behalf of Ambrose.
Thank you, thank you.
Please let her know we appreciate his service.
We really appreciate it and will say, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Okay, just to, for the sign note, we, Ms. Lila is here at the round of elections and actually another election board member, Stephanie McKees also in the audience too, so thank y'all for coming.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it. All right, we have a public hearing. Chris?
Evening, Board.
Good evening.
We have two, actually. First one is a rezon request made by the Tiff County Development Authority as the owner of the property in Timbuktu. As an agent of the property located in forty-seven Twenty Union Road. The property is currently vacant. It's roughly forty-four point eight, or forty-eight point four-four acres. The property is on WLI. Mr. Butler has proposed to buy that from the Tiff County Development Authority, continuing on the property being rezoned. He's asking to go to Ag for the purpose of, he wants to cut out two lots on the front, build two houses on, and then keep the remaining balance of the property for himself or a future home build there for himself. This went before the Tiff County Plan was on the board on May the eleventh. It was recommended for approval, all was in favor. There was one person in the meeting that night that spoke against it. I think he was a little confused, I spent about an hour with him afterwards, trying to explain because he didn't want to go into commercial property, which it was already his own commercial, and currently his own commercial. He had later came into my office and his complaints were really that he wanted to buy the property as they claimed. That's the only person that has come in or called in opposition of it, proposed to sign the property run a rad, and that's and we haven't had any other calls. We're more than happy to ask, answer any questions y'all may have.
Any questions? All right, going to four point two now.
Chairman and Board, we have a, we've had a lot of complaints from different, as Mr. Carter alluded to earlier, we have a lot of commercial properties going on, Highway eighty-two. A lot of those developers are complaining about our current sign ordinance. Our, most where all of our commercials on and for signs allows for one sign on a building. And back many years ago, that was probably okay because one business was in one building. Now, a lot of buildings now, they're building and they're having two or three different businesses inside, they're divided by firewalls, which makes a completely different building, but they're still only allowed on one wall sign. Our ordinance was a little more restricted then compared to other jurisdictions of our size in our area. We've done some research, we're recommending that the Board consider changing our sign ordinance from one wall sign, it's the only aspect of the sign ordinance we're asking to change, going from one wall sign, which allows thirty percent of that entirely law, is the size of the sign we have, to four signs at no more than ninety-six square feet. Not ninety-six square feet per sign, but an accumulation of square footage even enough to notice.
Total of signs is ninety-six square feet.
Correct.
All signs.
Well, four total.
Yeah.
They can't be no larger than, all four of them together can't be no larger than ninety-six square feet. So they can do one sign at ninety-six square feet, or they can do up to four together at ninety-six square feet. And that's more consistent with what's going on in other jurisdictions.
This is the only change we're recommending right now?
Yes, sir. This is the only thing that the developers and project managers are complaining about, it's kind of hard for them to get what their proposed clients want, like Aston Dental and Peachtree.
To say that there are developers and commercial folks, especially along the interstate, would not, and they put a sign up as big as the building, if they figure out it wouldn't be allowed. So, I mean, what Chris was supposed to, he was pointing on when he said, we've looked at, you know, almost the majority of communities that, you know, we're compared to in size, and even we feel like from progressive nature, looks as far as zoning and development like we do, and we are almost completely in line. And that's not to say that, you know, you wouldn't have, you know, a big convenience store and want to have two signs that are, you know, so many feet in the sky so you can see it from outer space, but I mean, this still, I think, keeps, uh, when Chris said that these sign ordinance, and y'all may remember, but right before I got here, I think there was a big yell about signs in this community, and approval of sign ordinance. And I'm not sorry that I missed that, nor do I want to, nor do we want to revisit that, but we are looking at what that sign ordinance does and how we line up with other communities, including the city, and we're recommending what we feel like. If you look at the total square footage versus the number of signs, I mean, there may be some little differences between us and say a lounge or us and Austin County, and we check how many, several communities.
Six or seven.
And, but it's just, it may be three signs that same square, total square footage versus four signs, that kind of thing, but I think we're, I mean, we, staff's been a fair amount of time looking at this, and, you know, when we've looked at it for Chris and Mike tonight, we feel like this is a good, I mean, this is a good, is that going to satisfy everything that that a developer wants? Probably not, but, you know, short of them writing their own ordinance and it changing every time we have a developer coming in down there.
So there's no complaints about our sign, half the land is just a sign.
It was just a number allowed on a wall sign.
How's it adjusted to the size of the building that's ninety-six square feet that have to be used to, usually getting in?
Yes, sir, I mean, I see if you, you know, if you allow a business to have a ninety-six square foot sign.
It's a two-hundred-foot building.
Exactly. They still have to send all of it to us for our review.
I mean, under this order, do you have the right to reject?
We can, we can.
How could you do that if you don't have?
Well, you know, based upon, based upon what else is in the sign ordinance, we're just talking about the one aspect as far as how to know.
I can see, you know, a small building under ninety-six square feet.
Yeah, it looked ridiculous.
Yeah.
And that's the whole reason for the one wall sign, I can imagine, of what the Board agrees, was to make it look, you know.
You got a portion where it says, you know, in certain these type five accessory tipper, it talks about the percentage of the wall that they can cover, so there, if you look through this.
That would be restricted on.
It is, it is more restricted other than, so you can't, you know, just put a hundred square foot on one wall, I mean, I think.
Can't have a whole good wall.
Just can't have that, but it goes on to further restrict that ninety-six feet down.
Somebody would try it.
Well, that's like Mr. Carter alluded to, I mean, this is not going to be what everybody wants.
Well, you can't do that.
Never could do that.
You can't do that. This is just more like we did, adjust closer to what everybody else is trying to do.
We think, we feel like this is a fair and equitable resolution to the request that we've seen from vendors, without just basically saying, we got no sign order, do what you want.
Do what you want, that's correct.
And I mean, so, I mean, that's the other alternative.
Let me get your tickets, we can come back up here.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Chris. All right, we move on to items to be discussed for regular session on June the twelfth, first one being Microsoft, Microsoft Software License Agreement.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Um, our Microsoft membership agreement signed back in due twenty-twenty is expiring at the end of this month. We're asking for approval of another three-year agreement with them. Uh, this agreement allows us to install operating systems on our servers, our workstations, as well as the office suite. Also gives us licenses to access those servers, it's all required, it's called a client access license. This allows us also to get all necessary patches, software upgrades during that time as well, keeps us in compliance with Microsoft licensing standards. We are also adding ten Office three sixty-five licenses, it's being utilized by our Tiff County Fire Rescue Department.
All right, any questions? All right.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Oh, you consented, didn't you?
All right.
Everybody's good.
Thank you.
All right, five point two, FY twenty-four grant award and date fund request for adult felony drug court. It's Donna England, good to have you here this time.
Good afternoon, Miss Rod.
Good afternoon.
Here in reference to for your twenty-four grant requests and also date fund requests, asking that the Board accept the grant award amount in the amount of two-hundred-ninety-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. Also making a request for twenty-five dollars in date funds, just to help with everything that's not supported by the grant.
All right, any questions? I know she's hoping we got some questions, aren't we? Not really, I don't. All right, thank you, Donna, can send a gentleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got to get this one tough. FY twenty-four grant award and date fund request for DUI court, Andrew Court, Michelle Calvin.
Hey, good afternoon. So we're requesting that you accept an award, an amount of one-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-six from the Criminal Justice Court in Council for Personnel Contract Services, Directness and Supplies and Training and Travel. There's a match requirement of twelve percent that amounts to fifty-eight thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars, and we're requesting twenty-five thousand from the date fund to cover that match requirement and any other financial obligations of the court. Any questions?
All right, consent agenda?
Yes.
Let her off live.
I do want to thank you for your continued support. We have a lot of participants that benefit from our program, and they wouldn't be able to do it without you guys, so.
Did y'all have your graduation already?
Um, we're having it in the fall this year, so.
Just so, just so that folks that are in the audience that might not, not be here routinely, I mean, these are, this is not the first time these ladies have been in front of us, and this is our normal process of, as their, their grant funding is approved every year, we, we, you know, we become the fiscal agent for that, and we accept that grant, and we, you know, as we talked about during the budget process, we also put matching funds to that, so, just, I know we're not asking a lot of questions, but this is not the first time they've been in front of us, so this is fairly anything, we need to say anything, not very.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, five point four, Pro Care maintenance and service program grid.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, we're seeking your approval to enter into a three-year maintenance agreement with Stryker Pro Care. This agreement is for twenty-two pieces of equipment on our ambulances. Uh, it includes the power loading system, the power cots, the cardiac monitors, AEDs, and our spare chairs. So, um, pretty much anytime we have any issue, they would come out at no cost and perform that repair along with the parts. And then included in this also is an annual PM inspection on every piece of equipment. And the cardiac monitors and the AEDs, they would have to be calibrated, calibrated a minimum of one time a year. So if any event happened throughout the year where it had to be done again, it would also be covered by calibration under this agreement. It's a three-year agreement, it is a budgeted item, and, um, let's see, it will start July one and end on June thirty twenty-sixth.
All right, any questions? Consent agenda? All right, thank you. All right, five point five, notice of award and contract agreement from Mitchell Store Road and Bridge Replacement Project, Jason.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Baseball award for you, sir.
Al, you, you know.
We're talking about both of our comments, you know.
A bid up before the project was held on May thirty-first, twenty-three, there were two bidders, Southern Concrete Construction and Underground Escavating Incorporated. The lowest bidder was Southern Concrete at one million four-hundred-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-eight dollars and forty-three cent. This is a T-splosted T project. And this is the bridge, you're going out next to Store Road, just past the landfill. After you would take a left to go to Omega Elementary.
We're in Tiff County now.
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions? Who want to start on that, Jason?
The notice to proceed, you know, once y'all approve it, I mean, you're still looking at a month and a half, two months before they get started. And hopefully with this, with the company that's doing this Southern Concrete, they, they pretty fast.
Any other questions? All right, consent agenda? Okay, thank you, thank you. Let's see, we've got more for you. Replacing air conditioning in Juvenile Justice Building.
The air conditioning unit went out at the Juvenile Justice Building right down below us last month, and we found two units, and the only one that we could get our hands on immediately. I think they were calling it, according to the register, and we didn't know when it was going to get fixed, and we found two units, and we went ahead and replaced one of them, and we would have waited to order one, it'd have been ten to twelve weeks. So we went ahead and ordered it with fourteen thousand five hundred dollars.
The, the, the property label has, it would have been approval of an emergency.
Yes.
But not, it was approved under emergency, we didn't know when, so, um, we have a staffing situation there in air condition, so we, we're going to improve that, and we need you to come back in and inform us.
All right, any questions? Senate General?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Five point seven, resolution number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-seven, surplus vehicles and equipment.
Okay, we have three vehicles at EMS that need to be surplus. We have asked our, Mr. Carter and I have asked all the staff to look at their inventory to help with our property liability increases. If the car's just sitting around, it's not being used, let's, um, get those surplused, and so there's three at EMS that need to be surplused. And two of those would be sold on go deals, and the third one is going to be transferred to, or we're proposing it being transferred to the airport for use as a courtesy car. Also, with the Airport Authority, you know, contracting out the services to, have an FBI to operate the airport, all of the vehicles and equipment out there belong to the county, so staff is asking that this Board surplus those items and give them to that Airport Authority. And the Airport Authority will listen to their FBI.
All right, any questions? Yeah, Paul? Okay, all right, consent agenda? All right, thank you. Five point eight, application for Georgia EPD Scrap Tire Amnesty Grant, there you go.
Okay, I was asked to get the application ready for the amnesty tire grant. And in doing that, there have been some changes to the grant parameters. For one, they don't cover labor anymore. All they will cover is the, um, transportation of the tires and the scrapping of the tires. Which would be fine if the, um, cost of those two things had not skyrocketed, just like everything else has. So, I need to have some direction from y'all, wait for them, do, do you still want to go forward with the application? Or, and if you do, I think, because Jason was going, he's shorthand, and, you know, he has to use his staff to do this event, I would recommend just doing it one day and do it during business hours, so he doesn't have to carry the cost of overtime, or, you know, that's still going to strain his people, but it's usually a two-day event for us, but if we just do the one day and do it during business hours, which would be seven to five-thirty.
On one day?
Well, the application right now, as I have it prepared, is either the first or second, Thursday if they do. But, and that, there's, there's no way to estimate what the costs were, because our first event, we plugged in like eleven thousand tires. Our second event, we only plugged in forty-six, forty-six hundred. So what I did was I just took those two events and I applied the costs that we had then, because EPD will only reimburse it up to four dollars per tire. And I applied that cost to those other events. If we had had that, if that was our event, if we had eleven thousand tires at our event in November, what would it cost us? And it would be, um, four dollars and fourteen cents, so we would have to pay anything that's over the four dollars. And there's no way to, and the least amount of tires you do, the more you're going to pay. So, you know, I just need direction, do y'all want to commit to that, or?
I just know from, from riding, I mean, those tires are going to end up on the side of the road, or in a ditch, or in a river, or whatever. These tires, I mean, these events do a great job of getting these tires, so, because Public Works is going to have to pick them up, they're going to pick them up out of a ditch, or out of a canal, or whatever. Having these events, I think, is a good thing for the county, even if we implement, have a little bit of cost associated with it, um, to get them tires from being thrown on the side of the road.
Didn't we help with the label last year, didn't we help move some tires?
I think Public Works did it on a Saturday.
I moved some tires.
And I didn't get paid, so I was just.
How many tires you move?
Last year, last year, it didn't rain.
Right.
Mr. Hughes say you moved a tire.
Well, I, I, I think if, I, I'm with you, Commissioner. It is very needed in certain areas. I think what we should look at next year, or the next time we do this, trying to get with the city at the same time that they do theirs, because they just did one. And so we, that might offset the cost and give us some extra help as well.
I mean, even if we did ten thousand tires, let's say twenty-five cent a tire, I, I think that's twenty-five hundred dollars well spent. Couldn't get these tires.
And you all can help with the label? That's what I do.
Any other questions, comments? All right, so I would be asking then for the approval of that, or, or go ahead with the application on the Senate General, so everybody okay with that? Okay, thank you. So that leads to the next one, agreement with Quality Tire Recycling for the Tire Industry.
Yes, this is this, the contract with the tire hauler and processor? They've been, they've did our last, they have done our last two events in the break. They'll have the containers here so that our guys can load them as we get the topics, and we don't have to wait.
Any questions on that? Senate General? All right. Five point ten, lease of State Properties Commission for Department of Juvenile Justice.
Uh, State Properties has notified us that they want to renew. This will be year four of the five years that they can renew. And they, their annual rental rate is twenty-three thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Any questions? Senate General? Are you going to carry on?
Georgia Public Defender, they, State Properties again, has contacted us that they would like to renew. This will be the last year of their renewals, so next year we'll have to have a whole new lease. But this is year eight.
Okay, any questions? Senate General?
Yes.
Okay, hear you?
Driver Services also has, State Properties also contacted us, they would like to renew, and this will be year four of eight years.
Any questions? Senate General?
Onto the federal government. The USDA Service Center, they have contacted us and they would like to, they've asked for a thirty-six month renewal for the same price that they're renting for now, which is seven fifty per square foot. They have a little over five thousand square feet. They also asked us to sign some kind of disclosure that says that we won't contract for any certain telecommunications or video surveillance. I has assured me, we don't do any of those services for them, so that really won't have any bearing on our.
It's bound to, I don't know.
Those were the one, one they asked for.
There's a new regulation of federal government.
Federal government, they don't want, they don't want their networks to be tied into anybody else's network, and they're securing this, the federal government being the federal government.
Gotcha. All right, any other questions? Senate General? And the last one.
All right, our renewal for our property liability hang in. One important note is that they are no longer offering the twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. We'll have to go to a five thousand dollar deductible. And this year, we will not receive a rate credit or a dividend credit. And there was an increase, you'll see down there, our net contribution will be seven-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-nineteen dollars.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, the insurance listing this?
Is there what?
So, just, just to kind of, and I had, just on the set in my office earlier, I had a call from Bob Rock County. When you look at insurance going up, it's not just Tiff County's insurance going up, uh, property, and I think they do, ACCG covers, I believe it's a hundred and forty-seven counties under, you know, under the property liability policies. Those prices have been fairly stable for, I can't remember, you know, for the longest time, but, uh, these several things have, having us looking at an increase. One is the, the current, um, our current, the current economic situation as it sits, and not just, I mean, in our state but across the country, so, I mean, when I call it reinsurance, but, I mean, I know there's a proper term, but a lot of insurance folks might say, but it's the insurance for the insurance companies, that's become more expensive, and quite honestly, our claims experience, so this is done over a three-year average, so if you look at the last three years, our, our claim experience has been at a hundred or slightly over that, a hundred and four percent, I think, smoothed over three years, and if you look at what insurance means, that means, you know, the, the insurance company would expect their, their return on our, on insurance to be at whatever the hundred percent mark is, right? And when it costs them more than, than that hundred percent rate, then, then, you know, we're at a hundred and four percent, then you're going to see an adjustment in our rates because of our claims history. We've had several, uh, large lawsuits, and we have several going on right now. You know, a lot of it has to do with public safety and those kind of things, I'll get into what, what they are, but, I mean, y'all are familiar with, you know, some of the things that we've got going on, and that affects our coverage, I mean, even if it's the coverage just to defend us in lawsuits, that's who defends us. So, I mean, that, that's what you're seeing there is a response to what is, I think, an economic adjustment based on the current continent, but you're also seeing an adjustment based on our last three years of claims history, which has been fairly substantial and, um, and outside of what the norm is, but we are also, like Miriam talked about, is taking, you know, making sure that we got every vehicle that's, that we're using, and we don't have extra vehicles sitting around that we're covering, we're also, uh, already scheduling some additional training, uh, and programs for not just law enforcement, but every driver of, of kind of vehicles, that we can try to reduce that, and, and, you know, some of the stuff we're looking at with our property, you know, when people use our facilities, that they have insurance and those kind of things, those are things that, uh, that we're looking at, are coming from our, you know, from ACCG and saying, these are things you need to look at, so we're, we're doing that, but. Those are things that, uh, that we're looking at, they're coming from our, you know, from ACCG and saying, these are things you need to look at, so we're we're doing that, but. Um, you know, our our hope is that we will see an adjustment to that back down. Commissioner, but the part that I think is inflationary, our 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 adjustment to the economy, I don't see if that, you know, the the cost of ensuring that that the market's seeing, I don't know that we'll see an adjustment back down to that.
All right. Okay, any other questions?
Approve that, Mr. Chairman, or do we?
Yeah, Senator Jen?
Yeah.
Okay, um, we got the added item on the agenda about discussing the holiday schedule. We said back in March, we would revisit that during the, um, budget process. And, uh, Miriam fixed up a nice little chart, thank you very much, that shows, uh, which holidays all the government agencies are taking, that being the county, city, the state, and the federal. And a couple of them that we're a little bit out of line on from the county is that we are the only government agency giving Christmas Eve as a holiday. And then we're the only government agency not giving Veterans Day as a holiday. So the proposal is simply to swap Christmas Eve for Veterans Day, and we would still have a total of eleven paid holidays. So is there any questions or discussion on that?
Yes, I, I made some, some visitation to some people, and I had some phone calls, I don't know how they got it. But they were saying that, and I was asking which one they would have, the Veteran or the, uh, Christmas Eve. They said they want the Christmas Eve, most people, you know, that's what I was told. The Veteran, and I understand about the Veteran, you know, I wasn't a Veteran, but I I agree with Veteran. I'm Veteran Day, but they said they would keep Christmas Eve and have Veteran Day.
Okay.
Next thing, I don't, I don't, I don't like taking nothing away from, from, I don't wanna take none of their holidays away, you know? We can add, but I don't wanna take away nothing.
Not taking.
I know, I know you're swiping.
Yes, they still have, they still have. Oh, they still have a little.
Ma'am, may I comment, Mr. Chairman?
Let me finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And and the next thing, we are not, I don't think none of us, whatever decision we make, we need to make it and stick with it. None of us is on this board work for the county. We're not a county employee, and we really don't know how they feel in the situation like this. If they're used to Christmas Eve, to me, by them, listen to them, they say they would keep it. Now, what decisions we make, we'll make it and we'll stick with it.
Okay.
My claim was, you know, my father served in the Pacific Theater in World War Two. That fact is marked on his gravestone, and I'm kind of in favor of Veterans Day, just because of my father.
All right, anybody else?
I'm I'm for, I'm for Veterans Day, I mean, Christmas Eve, I work Christmas Eve. And our, I believe our paid days off, as far as vacation time and all, is sufficient, and if someone wants to take off the whole day of Christmas Eve or half the day, they've got enough days there to, you know, to take off, 'cause that's a lot of paid holidays outside of vacation time. I wish I had that many, I don't have that many, I had a little use of PU if I wanted to take a, if I take the holiday off and not schedule to work. So I'm for adding Veterans Day and, and, uh, swap it out for Christmas Eve.
And Veterans Day means a lot for me, I I served four years in the Marine Corps. My brother that died two years ago served twenty-six years in the Marine Corps. My dad also served in World War Two in the Pacific Theater. So I I come from a military family, um, so Veterans Day is, you know, a whole special place in my heart as as well.
I most agree with everybody. Um, I come from a military background as well. And wish I could have served in the, in the service, but unfortunately, it didn't happen that way. Um, Commissioner Hester said something that we are, none of us are a county employees. That's absolutely right. I sit in a county building every day. I'm in close contact with county employees, and I talk to county employees. And sometime, and and Mr. Chairman, you and I, we talked about this. I I I have a relationship with some of the workers, where we talk about family. And we talk about holidays. Christmas Eve is very dear to some of the ladies. That's when they do their cooking, that's when they do their last-minute shopping. And they wanna do this before Christmas so they can have time with their families. Now, Ms. Jordan, thank you for giving that that form of us. 'Cause when I looked at that, I'm like, dang, I didn't know that we are the only ones that have Christmas Eve. But guess what? We in great financial shape, we just did the budget. And we talked about this as well, Mr. Chairman. Why can't we have both? Now, I know y'all saying that y'all ain't taking nothing from the employees, I'm sorry. You are. I am a routine person. If I go down a street and I'm used to going, turning left, and I end up missing that street, that bothers me because I missed that street. These people have gotten Christmas Eve, uh, for a number of years, and now we're going to disrupt what they have planned. I know Christmas Eve is on a Sunday this year, but for the next years, they, they won't have it. They 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 will have to, it's it's gonna be during the week, is what I'm saying. Mr. Chairman, when you called me on Wednesday or Thursday, you mentioned to me about employees working four hours and repaying them eight hours. But we find out that that can't, that couldn't be done. But if that was a good reason for you to even think about, why can't we just give them the eight hours and add, add the Veterans Day? My thing is, I would like to see Christmas Eve stayed.
Okay. Nobody else? Okay, so everybody okay putting this on the regular agenda for, for for discussion about going Monday night then? Sure answer. Okay, so we'll add that to the regular agenda then?
Would we, would we add?
We would be?
Would we add that?
Further discussion on that, right?
But about, what about the discussion?
This one, my regular agenda.
We 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 add, are we adding to?
Swap. Christmas Eve for Veterans Day.
Or keep both?
Correct.
Or, so you got, you got strangers out there, uh, attorney, because we gonna have three, uh, seven right there. You need strangers out, what we gonna do?
We got the idea that I'm hearing you say would be, let's see what potential options are that the board would like to see, from, say, from catalog of choices.
Mm-hmm.
And have the agenda to reflect those options, and then that, those options will still be all open to discussion, and then you can receive motions of support.
And I think, that 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 would be a suitable way to do that, if the board's, would like to manage it that way.
So the options that we're talking about would be the, which, what's?
Was in their name, yeah.
What's the, two, right?
To just add the Veterans holiday, or do nothing?
Or swap that as a name for Christmas?
Yeah, that's the beach party.
That's what we have, so you add the two more.
So the third, mhm, do nothing?
Do nothing, or add.
Or add.
Senator, that's it. All right, so everybody's agreed, add that to the regular, I think we got both of them, okay? Are you clear now? Okay, all right. All right, partners, guys?
Mr. Chairman, I, Jen was, yeah, the other option is is to, I mean, I think, so clear what we'll do is, we'll get to the regular meeting, we'll have a motion to amend the agenda, because it's gonna be different. And another way of doing it is just keeping that open, or gentle to, to the press, to generally say what the,
A man personnel policy.
Personnel policy for holidays.
And the holiday schedule and not try to, we've got three options here. Like a general amendment, then, once y'all decide that, then the, then the agenda, I know we'll discuss, we could cover it later, I think it's gonna be more.
Receive the motion. Yes, I agree.
Pardon? Uh, we can, we're done doing the holiday schedule. What we're doing here, yeah.
If y'all in agreement with doing that, I think it's a better idea.
Okay, everybody agree with that? Mm-hmm, okay. All right, discussion only, the, um, working session in July falls on July the fourth holiday. Mm-hmm. So I need to know what the pleasure the board is, would y'all like to schedule that on another day, or would y'all like to handle all the business in the regular session on June, uh,
Ten?
July tenth, if I'm being right, July tenth.
Let's not have every business in July.
It'll be July tenth.
July tenth, yeah.
We look back at last year, and of course, I know it can change from year to year, we didn't have like five items on the July agenda last year. It's usually a lot a month, so, uh, I think we'd be fine handling all in the regular session, but I just wanna get the feedback from all of you. So do it all at the same time?
Are we gonna come early or same time?
Same time. Everybody fine on that, okay? There's your direction, right?
Thank you.
All right, so any other items for discussion on? Anybody has, okay, Mr. Carter?
New executive session, uh, for real estate.
Say. Anything right now? Say it, all right, Ms. Hughes?
Yes, I, Friday to Sunday, I received phone calls about Addendale Mills and the homeless. Not sure what we can do about it, but I have some very upset constituents about homeless people out there, and they're thinking that they are being told to go to that area.
So they live in the mills, or just there's a road behind it, or?
There's a road behind, there's a road behind there, but what they're doing is they're going in and out of it as well. Property owners do not want to be liable for anything happening out there. They have called the Sheriff Department, I have not called the Sheriff Department, but they say that they're not getting any responses. So I told them that I would mention it in our meeting, and I will speak with them sometime this week.
Okay, staying. Done, ready? Paul? All right, we have a motion to go into executive session for real estate.
So.
Okay, so. We got two motions, all right.
Seven seconds.
Nine seconds. Nine is gone, move. Second, all in favor. All right. Thank y'all for coming, appreciate it.